Good evening. I would like this meeting, regular scheduled meeting of the Cordova Recreation Board of Directors, Wednesday, January 17th, 2024 at 6:32 PM. Jones.
Thank you to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening. I'd like to welcome to the podium Nicole Lowery, who is our Recreation Supervisor Two. And following the pledge, our Recreation Superintendent Chase Michalavi will provide an introduction.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, Chair Danzel and members of the board. Tonight, I'd like to introduce you to Nicole Lowery, our new Recreation Supervisor Two overseeing aquatics programming, special events, the Hagan Community Park kiosks, and park and picnic rentals. Nicole grew up in Eldorado Hills and spent summers on her family's ranch in Arbuckle. After a summer volunteering at Eldorado Hills CSD Summer Camp, she decided to work at the community pool. From there, she received her official lifeguard certification and has been working in the aquatics field ever since. After receiving her bachelor's degree from Chico State, Nicole worked at the law firm of Thurbin and McCainey for five years while completing her master's degree in recreation administration. She spent the next 11 years supervising programming, special events, and facilities, including eight different pools, two senior centers, three emergency evacuation sites and shelters, an amusement park, a boathouse, and a sports complex. When Nicole isn't working or serving as treasurer on the CPRS District Two Board, she enjoys spending time with her family, her dog Lily, and traveling. And I just want to say Nicole brings a wealth of knowledge to our district, and Recreation is thrilled to have her as part of our team, and we truly look forward to the many new and exciting things that she'll continue to bring to CRPD. Thank you.
Nicole. Let's move on to item two, standing action items.
Thank you. This is our standing action item to deal with any AV2449 requests, and seeing none will list it as no action taken.
Thank you, ma'am. Let's move on to roll call.
Director Yearwood?
Here.
Director Mattis?
Here.
Secretary Langen?
Here.
Vice Chair Sloan?
Here.
And Chair Danzel?
Here.
Thank you. All persons accounted for. Let's move on to item B, comments by public on non-agenda items.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome the public this evening on this Zoom call. We have one member of the public joining us this evening. Members of the public may address the board on district topics not listed on this agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes. It's a violation of state law for the board to discuss or take action on non-agenda items. Board members may only briefly ask clarifying questions or refer the matter to staff. And at this time, I see no requests.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Let's move on to item C, consent calendar idea.
Thank you. Consent calendar items are considered administratively routine and will be acted upon in one motion unless separate action on a specific item is necessary. The chairperson will consider any requests for discussion on the items prior to approval of the consent calendar. This evening, we have four items for your consideration. And Chair Danzel, I would like to pull item C1 for a separate vote, please.
Thank you, ma'am. Do I have any requests by the public to pull any other items?
I see no requests.
Any by any other staff members? Any by the board? C4, C4? Okay, thank you. Do I hear a motion on item C2 and C3?
C3.
I'll move the board to approve consent calendar items, C2 and C3.
Okay, I have a motion by Director Yearwood. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Director Mattis. All those in favor?
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Director Mattis?
Aye.
Secretary Langen?
Aye.
Vice Chair Sloan?
Aye.
Chair Danzel?
Aye.
Let's move on back to item C1.
Thank you. Item C1 was pulled due to the absence of Secretary Langen at the December 13th board meeting, requesting abstention on approval of those minutes, please.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion?
Oh, I moved to be approved. The minutes of the regular meeting of the board of directors from December 13th, 2023.
I have a motion by Director Mattis. Chair, a second?
I'll second.
Second by Director Yearwood? Roll call vote.
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Director Mattis?
Aye.
Secretary Langen?
Epstein.
Vice Chair Sloan?
Aye.
Chair Danzel?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. Let's move on to item C4. Vice Chair Sloan, you asked for this one to be pulled?
I did. Um, I'll address this to our arts architect planner aficionada, Laura Taylor. That new park is going to be built. It's going to be a, what's it, 14 acres? Uh, community park. That's how it is. Was it 11 or 14? Oh, Christina James is going to be on this. Okay. She's the other aficionada, not a lot.
Good evening, members of the board. That's a 10 acre park?
10 acre community park. And we have not named it yet.
That's correct.
So is it, when does the naming process come into? Because doesn't that play with the the design part? Because if you don't know what the the theme is, it's hard to design a a park around it.
So the the process, and this is laid out in the RFP that was issued to potential consultants, is we will go through a thorough public community process to gather input for the design of that park. And after going through that process, typically two meetings, it will be brought before the board, the concept plan for board approval. And at that same time, now that we have a naming committee, the potential names will be brought before the board for their approval as well.
In the, uh, the form, Odell, they, that is the one that did Sun Ridge?
Correct.
And another question would be, when we talk about, when we talk about sports courts, they have tennis courts, and they said the type of a wall ball, ball wall or game, or I don't know what that was. Is there, is there a way that we can take a certain? We've, 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 in Rosemont, we have this new configuration of four courts, two tennis, two pickleball, and full court basketball. Could be become a standard in some of our community parks so that we're, we can offer that instead of, you know, making it a battle between who wants tennis and who wants this and where does the basketball court go and all this?
Well, I, I think it'll be interesting to see how that multi-use sport court functions, to see how our public likes it. And then we certainly, if it's successful, we can copy that template in other parks. For this particular park, you know, as I said, we'll be gathering information from the public on what they want to see. We'll also be looking at the optimized plan and seeing what needs the optimized plan has identified for that area. And then ultimately, that concept plan will be brought before the board.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, since you brought it up, Rick. So this is just almost a half million dollars just for design. This is nothing in the ground, nothing.
Correct. So, but when you look at the, the construction budget for this park, that, that design fee is in line with a 10% construction budget, and that's pretty typical for the industry. You're looking at 18 months of planning. They're the interface with the public, so they have a lot of work to do in, in that. They're also creating the construction documents. They're routing and shepherding it through the whole permitting process. And then there's also a substantial portion for the construction administration as part of that contract. So it's, if you look at the hours that this firm over the next two years is putting into, you can see where that is, where that fee is coming from.
Thank you. Let me just say one more. I almost would love to see our park district have a park's planning department that actually does this. You know, wouldn't you love to create your own park and say, this is a Christina James park?
Some, some parks are barn key, some developers and some are ours.
This is a big one. This is, you know, almost half a million dollars going into the design, and I'm sure you guys did a great job with the concept idea of what?
It comes down to staffing. We're able to do a lot more projects at one time. I get to do a lot of renovation projects in-house, drawing them. But by shepherding this out to a consultant, who's going to put a whole team of landscape architects on it, we're able to do a higher quality job. And I'm able to oversee 12 parks in the next five years versus one park with all my time spent on.
You act as art director sort of on that?
I'm a project manager, so I oversee the budget, the schedule, the design, of course, with management team input. That's my job. And board approval.
Thank you, Christina.
Thank you.
Okay, hearing, hearing those comments, do I have a motion for item C4?
Chair Danz, I'll make the motion to approve consent calendar item C4.
I have a motion by Director Yearwood. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
I have a second by Vice Chair Sloan. Roll call vote.
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Director Mattis?
Aye.
Secretary Langen?
Aye.
Vice Chair Sloan?
Aye.
Chair Danzel?
Aye.
Thank you, folks. Let's move on to item D, presentation.
Thank you. Item D1 is a presentation by staff on the 2023 year in review. And I'd like to welcome to the podium Communications and Marketing Analyst Shelby Golden.
Hi, everyone. Good evening, Chair Danzel and members of the board. I'm here tonight to present the 2023 year in review. It looks a little different this year. You may have noticed. We decided to make it into a brochure that will be available online and at our community centers. This will be a tool that we can use to help inform the public again about who we are, what we do, whether that's community members, partners, potential sponsors, getting the word out there about who we are and what we're doing in our community. We'll also be able to use this as a tool and a format to show our accomplishments and various metrics throughout a calendar year, which will be important to show, especially as we go out for funding. This will be a good documentation to provide them. And before we take a quick look into this, I just want to say a quick thank you to all the various staff members that worked on this and compiled it, and we got together to get published. So let's take a look. Can you see it up on your screen? All right. So we start the year off in review with a little bit about us. Where to find more information about us, if you want to go into a deeper dive, our vision, our mission. Then moving on, we have our governing body. So our 2023 Board of Directors there with your nice new pictures that we got taken. And a little bit about the election districts, since we are now a district-based electoral system. Moving on, we have our district overview. So we have listed here how many neighborhood parks we have, how many community parks, community centers. And in the next year, you'll see that these numbers are going to go up. As Christina mentioned, we're working on a lot of parks right now. Our highlight for this section is the new park that opened in 2023, WH Williamson Park. Then we have our financial snapshot. So we have a little bit of brief overview here, just so people can get an idea of where we're at. So you can see there that we had $16.4 million in revenues, with the majority of that being the tax revenue. And then the recreation revenue provided cost recovery and fees of $2.9 million, with a large portion of that being from the Cordova Golf Course. Then further down the page, we have our fund reserves and how that's broken out. And then we have a brief update on the developments. So this year, three different developments were annexed into Community Facilities District. Now we move on to our investment in our community, which is always a fun part, right? We love investing in our community. So we have some quick facts, quick data points there for you. We have impacted over 90,000 community members. And that number is really a lot higher, right? Because we can't account for every single person that may wander into the parks and enjoy those facilities and enjoy those amenities. There are over 1,700 classes offered throughout all the different facilities, different types. We have, as you know, serve all ages here, so lots of recreation opportunities. There are 15 special community events over the year, and the Fee Assistant Program provided over $20,000 to help 31 people. And one of our highlights for recreation this year is the Life Without Limits Program, which was a great partnership with the Cordova Golf Course and UCP of Sacramento in Northern California. So there's a little bit tidbit there if you want to read a little bit more about it. In our Parks and Facilities section, we have some quick facts for you there as well. So there was $3.2 million invested in capital improvement projects, approximately $545,000 in grant money was received for three projects, and then 34 projects were completed. And as you might remember, we had our ribbon opening for a project completion for the Fetter Spiel Walkway Improvement Project back in June. So we have that highlighted. Next, we have our news section. And so these are just some quick pop-outs that really had a feel for our 2023 year. So we have the Eagle South Project out at Haraland and Community Park. We won a statewide award from CPRS for the Who We Are campaign. We have the Community Pools Project out at Rosemont Community Park. And then, of course, in September, we celebrated the 65th anniversary with the gala. And lastly, we have some information on the Cordova Recreation and Parks Foundation and their membership program. So it goes over what your money goes to, to support with the membership, what benefits you get, and how to sign up. And that's all she wrote. So I'm here to answer any questions if you have any, or help direct you to staff who might know the answers. I might not know.
Thank you, ma'am. Director Yearwood?
I don't have any questions. I like it. It's, it's really nice. You know, we always like nice colorful things. It's, and it's really like a snapshot. So it's, you know, which what it's meant to be. So look at these handsome fellows right here.
Great photos.
Yes. So, yeah, just great, great job.
Director Mattis?
There's no TikTok.
No, maybe, maybe in progress. We'll see.
That's good. Thank you.
Secretary Langen?
No, I just thank you. Great job with it. It does a great job of just bullet pointing, just major things that we did as a, as a district. So thanks.
Vice Chair Sloan?
I like it. I like the whole thing in my hand, but I also like to have maybe, uh, if there's a PowerPoint too, or two shows here, it's nice to have also.
We'll be putting this online too, if that helps.
On the phone line?
Yeah, we'll be putting this PDF online so that people can view it online on their phones or on their computers.
Yeah, it'd be, it'd be kind of cool to put something like this to, with a voiceover too. Just thoughts.
We can look into that.
Okay. One question I have is the QR codes. Are you tracking those or are you able to track those? Or are you just?
We track them.
Okay, good.
Wonderful job. Once again, I mean, this is, it's been, it was a quiet end. There's, you know, no poems, no songs, no guitar. Yeah, I like, I like it. It's simple and it's.
We'll see. No problem.
I, I heard you. Director, when I heard something one time about somebody jumping in a pool and then they finally did it. So I guess now a ukulele is coming one day or eventually, right? I believe that person said, build me a pool and he will jump. And that's what happened. So. So it happened. So thank you, staff. Thank you, Shelby. Thank you, everybody who had a hand in this. Great job. Thank you. And Shelby, when will this be online? Tomorrow? Great. Thank you. I will send people that way.
And Chair Danzel, just checking really quickly. Sorry, we have no public comment requests on this item.
Great. Thank you, ma'am.
I was trying to get Matt Goodell to do a memories rendition on this guitar as she was presenting that, but he was just too busy today.
But I had a dream. Next year. Next year. On ukulele. Have you heard of practice? He needs more.
I guess we're moving on to the committee reports.
Yes, thank you. Item E1 is a standing committee report for Budget and Finance on January 16th, and that is Chair Danzel and Director Yearwood.
Director Yearwood, I'll let you start, since it was your committee at that point still. Granted, it was yesterday.
Was it?
We have not assigned new committees yet, so it was your appointment for that committee.
I got you.
I'm sure you can hear it. It doesn't sound like you can. These microphones are tripping me out down here. It was another wonderful presentation by our CFO, Matt Goodell. Well done, well done. I'm always amazed. I always think our budget should be bigger considering everything we do. But we sure do a lot with, with what we have available to us. We're looking good with our, um, our audit and I'm trying to think, what was that word? I can't find it.
Yeah, what's the opinion? What is it? What's the opinion? Do you remember? Quiz time.
Ununique? What was it?
Unqualified.
Unqualified, yes. Which is good. Which is, it doesn't sound good. I think it's just because because accounts don't want to tell you you did a good job. So, but yeah. Again, it was a good, always good to see these things. I enjoyed the thing last year when I was first on this where you did the, I can't, it was just a chart where the funding was coming in and what you could do with that money and where it showed really nice where maybe we needed more money, usually, you know, like the BOZ. So that was a big glaring. So, but everything is trending the right way. And I learned a lot about, you know, pension funding and that you don't want to be fully funded and all those good things. So, yeah, everything looked good and we're moving right along. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. My part of the report, it was, it's nice to get it like six pieces of paper versus
98?
98. Or when I first started here, you know, for, you know, six inch binder of trying to figure out what, what was going on in the district. So all the information's there. I know that the CFO's got all that information. If I ever really needed to know, you know, how many times went to Lowe's to pick up a three-quarter inch nut, he can, he can get that for me if I really needed it. But, you know, nice, clean. It's nice to know that we have another clean audit now with no findings. That's, you know, where we want to be. We don't, we, we want to be, you know, clean, transparent, everything with everybody. And that's where we are now for multiple years. And it's, it comes to, you know, putting the right team, team in place and, and technology and a little bit of, you know, love and hope to, to get where we are. And so, you know, thank you, staff. Thank you for the, you know, departments making sure that they watch their budgets, kept where they needed to be. And you know, if they were, were in a little bit of trouble, they reached out to, you know, Mr. Goodell and found out, you know, one other department wasn't using their money for something and was able to, to get where they needed to get. So thank you very much.
I just want to note real fast. And so the next step is going to be the final draft. And so I've been coordinating with the auditors. And so I'm going to bring the final draft of the audit to the board next month. So.
Well, thank you, Mr. Goodell.
Item F, public hearings, seeing none. I will move on to item G, regular calendar. Seeing none there. We will move on to uh, item H, board of directors items.
Thank you. Item H1A is to nominate and make appointments to board committees for the 2024 term. If the board desires to activate committees for the 2024 term, staff recommends that the chairperson make nominations and the full board vote on committees through separate actions. According to board policies, standing committee appointments may be done through nomination by the chair and approval by majority vote of the board, as well as the chairperson can establish ad hoc committees as deemed necessary, and also make those appointments directly. Under the analysis, we have actually four committees this year that staff is recommending be activated. Budget and Finance, District Policies, City Two by Two, and School District Two by Two. All meetings conform with the Brown Act, and board members are compensated for each meeting attended up to six per month. And I'll turn it over back to you, Chair Danzel.
Thank you. Uh, do we have any public comment on this, Ms. Jones?
I see no requests.
Thank you. So I'm going to start with the Budget and Finance Committee, because that happens to be the first one. So I would like to nominate Director Yearwood and Secretary Langen to the Budget and Finance Standing Committee. Uh, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
I have a, a motion by Chair Danzel and a second by Director Mattis. All those in favor, roll call vote.
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Director Mattis?
Aye.
Secretary Langen?
Aye.
Vice Chair Sloan?
Aye.
Chair Danzel?
Aye.
Second one. We are going to go to District Policies. And I would like to nominate Secretary Langen and Chair Danzel to those. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion by Chair Danzel and a second by Director Yearwood. Roll call vote.
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Director Mattis?
Aye.
Secretary Langen?
Aye.
Vice Chair Sloan?
Aye.
Chair Danzel?
Aye.
Thank you. Let's move on to School District Two by Twos. Um, I would like to nominate Director Mattis and Vice Chair Sloan for the School District Two by Twos. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion by Chair, Chair Danzel, a second by Director Yearwood. Roll call vote.
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Director Mattis?
Aye.
Secretary Langen?
Aye.
Vice Chair Sloan?
Aye.
Chair Danzel?
Aye.
And last committee for the night would be the City Two by Two. And I would like to put Director Yearwood and Chair Danzel on that one. Do I hear a second? Second, I have a, a motion by Chair Danzel and a second by Secretary Langen to a roll call vote.
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Director Mattis?
Aye.
Secretary Langen?
Aye.
Vice Chair Sloan?
Aye.
Chair Danzel?
Aye.
Thank you, folks. Let's move on to item H2, organ report.
Thank you. Item H2A, there was no training over the last period. So item B is the Community Activities Report.
Thank you. We're going to change something up here a little bit this year. We're going to actually start with Vice Chair Sloan on your committee reports.
Your committee reports?
Your committee report, or not your committee, but your.
Um, January 8th, I attended the ribbon cutting for Hummingbird Park. And it was a nice, nice day, nice cutting. It was a little bit, the lighting was a little bit tough. A challenge, but had a little nice of a turnout. It's always nice to christen a park. And I really appreciated Director Mattis' kids being there because it showed you what the park was made for. And you could hear the sound in the background. Kids playing. The next thing was today, earlier today, 10 AM, I attended the online Zoom meeting for the CARPD Board uh, meeting. Started off with talking about the governor's budget that he's, uh, proposed or passed, the $291 billion budget with a deficit of $38 billion. And, um, but there's 13.1 billion in reserves. So, I mean, there's still hope, but I think it might be more of a challenge of getting grants and bonds for this coming year. One other thing that they've done, and I don't know if we've done it with our reserves, is they've moved it into a higher, a high yield money market. And there's a lot of opportunities out there right now. I know I just moved some money into a higher yield. At least at 5%. And I wonder if that's what something that our district does too. So we're just not sitting there because it's still money markets. It's, it's open money, you know, it doesn't lock it up. The next thing was, we talked about, let's see, the conference update. So far, we have 13 sponsors and a total of $19,000 raised in donations for this next conference. That'll be uh, in Sonoma at the Hyatt. And the title, the theme of it is Built to Last, which I assume is talking about sustainability and facilities and parks. And remember, that's May 22nd through the 25th. You guys are all going to be there. I want commitment. I want commitment, just like jumping in that pool. Did you not do it? Um, we also thought we had legislative uh updates, and I guess the one of the biggest ones that they're keeping an eye on was uh Assembly, somebody person, Macheko's AB eight seventeen, which I guess deals with the open meetings and agendizing teleconferencing and all that kind of stuff. So it was held over from last session and it made it to committee by a vote of eight to nothing, so. Uh, I think that's all, I think I'm sure that Director, Chair Danzel will have more to offer.
I will, when my turn comes, thank you, sir.
Well, you're not going that way.
No, I'm going that way back to myself. Change things up.
Secretary Lang? Yeah, um, since I was uh not here for the last meeting, uh, November twenty-sixth with the Christmas tree lighting. Um, it's probably my third or fourth year being at that event. But this year in a different capacity, and it was just really cool to be there just to see, uh, you know, the, the hundreds or thousands of people uh that were there, just how it gets so packed. Especially when the Christmas tree is about to get lit and stuff, it's just, it's just fun, just a fun uh community event that um we do very well. So, great job. Um, and then uh December seventh, just the uh, the open house for the new district office. Just cool just to come and just hang out for a while um and just chat. And then um uh this past Saturday, January thirteenth, the polar bear plunge. Yes, I jumped in, but no, I did not swim a lap. The people that did are, wow, um, you guys are pretty amazing. But uh just, just a really fun time. Uh, I was able to this year bring my, my whole family, and so we were all there. And so, yeah, just, just an awesome time, even though it rained, it wasn't like super cold outside, so it was great, yeah, just, just an awesome time.
Thanks, sir. Director Mattis?
Yeah, I went to the ribbon cutting ceremony there at Hummingbird Park. It was great. My kids loved it and they have, it worked out great because it was their last day of winter break. So it was an activity to do, so it worked out pretty good. And then last night, uh, I attended the um community event or the community planning meeting for the Levy project. Didn't know what to expect going into that. First of all, the way it started, uh, there was just a lot of technical issues, a lot of failures there, started late. There was just a lot of things that, you know, with my background knowing, just I really felt bad for the people behind there. And it makes you really appreciate like Danielle, Mark and the rest of the staff when they do these events, you know, just the professionalism that comes through there is just uh is what really shown through there, even though it started fifteen, twenty minutes late because of that, but still, uh, it was nice to hear the, the comments from the public. There's going to be a lot of stuff, especially there at the um uh, Lardmont Park there. Maybe a lot of questions, uh, hopefully, uh, the Levy project, they'll do a um a site visit with the community there to kind of see what exactly is going to be removed. And that might be something that we want to do too with our park too, to kind of have some visuals and see where it's at. I would recommend, if it does come to us, um, to be prepared for people to be pretty fired up about it. There was a lot of questions that were asked. They didn't give enough time. They put out the notice before Christmas, it sounded like, but the forty-five day window. Yeah, there was well over a thousand pages of technical documents for the public to review. Uh, the quality wasn't that great, so there was just a lot of uh a lot of questions that the public had that they need, that they wanted answered. Obviously, they're not going to get those answers there, so they'll get them eventually. I know they want the project to stop, but there's just, um, it obviously has benefits of what it's doing. So it's just one of those things, just kind of keep an eye on it. And if you have another chance to, the ten one, I would recommend.
Thank you, sir. Director Yearwood?
Um, I as well, attended the ribbon cutting ceremony for Hummingbird Park on January eighth. It's a very nice little park there. I know I drive by it many days and it's always got folks there playing the one of the local parent groups has got ten different, ten strollers plus, or they're with their kids someday, so. Uh, nice event, uh, whether it was a nice gorgeous day. And the actors that were brought out to play on the structure while uh, while we were doing the ceremony were wonderful and were paid with, I believe, what? Apples and water and something, but uh, yeah, whatever they had. But uh, yeah, that's always great to like recognize and celebrate us opening a park. That's all I've got.
Thank you, sir.
I was nice and warm on the thirteenth.
Oh, yeah, I was going to say, I'm sorry. I was planning on going, but when I woke up and saw the rain outside, I was.
Because I'm not getting wet to get wet.
Now, for my report, I've just got a few things, uh, ribbon, ribbon cutting. Um, great way to start the year, opening a brand new park to the community. You know, it's lovely always having kids in the park playing on play structures because if the little kids aren't there, the big kids get there, start taking pictures, you know, crazy things happen. But, you know, I've been told that that's one of several parks that should be opening this year, um, weather permitting and you know, supply chains and everything else. It's one of several that should be opening this year, so very excited to start the year off with a park on January eighth. January ninth, I attended CARPD conference committee. Just getting ready for our conference, uh, I happen to be the, the chair of that committee. Um, we've actually picked up since that day, uh, more sponsors, we're well on our way to, to being where we need to be. Registration's opening, early registration closes. I have to look at the date for you, Ms. Jones, I'm sorry, I have it, I do have it in PowerPoint here. But um, love to see the entire board there. I know that uh Director Yearwood will probably be out of the country or out of the state for one of his three children. And uh, I know that, but, oh, what's that?
Just this state.
Just this, just this state. One of the things that uh they will be doing is they're offering the sexual harassment training, so I don't know if anybody needs that for 2024. Um, it'll probably be me just because that's just when it happens. But um, yeah, we're talking, uh, like Vice Chair Sloan talked about, we are going to be talking about sustainability and how, how to make our districts, you know, sustainable through, through whatever it is, whether it's natural disasters, whether it's financial, how are we going to create things to, to make sure that the districts in the, in the state of California still are viable? Uh, the thirteenth was Polar Bear Plunge, my ninth year doing this thing. Next year's our big ten year, so let's uh, let's make sure we celebrate that. Well, I also did not swim a lap, I'm not quite that old yet, maybe for ten years, maybe for ten years, I'll do that.
You all heard it. He's swimming a lap, you heard it, he's making commitment.
What's that?
You made the commitment.
I said, maybe.
No, 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 no.
Oh, okay, so I'll put my wits if you're going to do that one. Um, but, you know, always great event. I think Nicole, this was our biggest that, that I can think of so far. I mean, I remember back ten years ago when there was like five of us who did it. Um, but back ten years ago or nine years ago, it was cold as could be, but it was sunny and dry out. So in the last few years, it's been, I think since Chairman Rorke, it's been here, it's rained every year, so.
It's all played back.
But, you know, great turnout. I know that the Cordettes and the Blue Marlins were out there, uh, fundraising for themselves at the same time as they were fundraising for the district. Um, or not the district, but the um the parks foundation. And um, always great to have, have that board help, help with everything we can on the parks. And then um CARPD board meeting today. Um, about an hour and a half Zoom call. You know, uh, Vice Chair Sloan went over a lot of it. There's um, a lot of things going on. Um, that we're, we're just, we're, we're working on planning with watching, especially eight, um, eight seventeen with uh Assemblywoman Pacheco, you know, trying to, trying to make sure that everybody has access to, to their government in a sense, especially when it comes to small committees, rural committees that can still do Zoom meetings and things like that. You know, when you live in a rural community and you might live an hour and a half away from, because your community's that large, because you cover that much. In the wintertime, that could be detrimental to drive that hour, hour and a half to get there and then an hour and a half to get back. So it's, it's not just us, it's, you know, the legislation is looking at it and things are moving forward, which is great because of, you know, like Vice Chair Sloan said, we had an eight, eight oh to get it to committee, so that, that's a big step from where we thought it was going to be a year ago. We, we do have our, our, our ledge days with CARPD coming up in March that uh we're going to have our meeting on the twelfth and then we're going to go to the Capitol and, and uh speak with assembly members on the, on the thirteenth about what's going on and what issues um affect, affect parks and some of the LAFCO issues and things like that. CSDA actually, for the, for the first time in a long time, has a, their president is part of Parks Rec, which is huge. Um, that's not something we're, we're used to seeing. So to have that in our back pocket and to have both organizations that are trying to work together now to have one voice under Parks Rec is really going to help things move forward in 2024, 2025. And that is all I have, so let's move on to item I one.
Thank you. Item I one is the district wide monthly progress report for January, and I'll turn it over to General Manager Larkin.
Thank you, Clark Jones. And before I start, the lap swimmers were myself and Chase. He dared me and I took him on with that and I regretted it ever since, so um, I do not recommend it.
Does anybody have that picture, by, by the way? I, I think I do, but.
I don't recommend it.
I, I'd like everybody to see after this meeting, the look on their faces, they're hitting water to know how cold it really is.
It was amazing. But I think Nicole captured that, that moment, so. So staff have been busy working with Sacramento County staff on the conditions of approval for the Mather South Development Project. Uh, they are moving that project forward to the planning commission in early February. Uh, we are seeing some activity uh in the Sacramento County area of our district at this time. Uh, but they are the first to the table uh to get their uh conditions of approval moving forward faster than the other developers in that particular area. At the Village Green Community Park, sorry, the Lincoln Village Community Park, uh, we went out and did a site visit and we talked about the scoping of the walkway extension project that we have at our CIP plan. Uh, while the new pathway will be installed, it is cost effective to replace the existing concrete and the large picnic area as well, as we are going to replace the picnic tables and the barbecue as well while we're doing that project. Uh, the idea is we're, we're having the ability to uh be a little bit more gray than black and white with our CIP projects and the way that they're timed out. So the idea is to get that one completely done and then move on to uh rebudgeting for additional expenses that we'll have at the Hagan Community Parks Walkway Project that will extend out now to the American River. So uh, that obviously is going to be a larger expense, uh, but we figured we get one thing done, completed and then move on and complete the other one, uh, if we have that ability to do so. So uh, that's a new update for us, we should stay within budget. Uh, if there is a budget adjustment necessary, we'll bring that to the board at mid-year. Uh, we met with these again, uh, staff on a chase drive trail project that will be happening at the Cordova Community Park, um, Hagan Park. And basically what it is, it's a, a grant that was uh given to the city of Rancher Cordova to extend, extend the American River uh down from Chase Drive to the American River. And it's going to be on the left side of the entryway past where the kiosk is. Uh, there'll be a new entrance and exit to that overflow parking area for the Fourth of July. And so we've had discussions with the city staff to make sure that when we are doing this project, uh, we can hopefully do it to benefit and make some additional improvements that will help with the flow parking, especially at the Fourth of July event. Uh, we are using that area as well uh quite extensively at this point for our events. And so the popularity of Hagan uh Community Park has been that we've had to open that overflow more often than we had ever in the past. Uh, so we may look to consider uh doing a more permanent parking lot, uh, if that's what makes sense in the future. But that is leased property that the county has that we lease from them, and so we'd have to work with the county as well. Uh, so that's news for us to move forward. They're looking to do that, I believe, late spring, early summer, depending on uh organization, organizing it around and not impacting large events in that area. Uh, we have your annual Form 700 filing. You may have gotten that email today or yesterday perhaps. So look for that if you haven't seen it. If you have any uh concerns, questions on how to fill it out, Danielle loves helping with that. And so reach out to her, it's pretty easy now. They've made it pretty simple for you just to click on the link, get your login, get your password, and then intuitively it fills it out for you, and then you can just pick your designations. And if you could get that done by the deadline of April's first, 2024, that would be great. Uh, we have our optimized plan that we are still in review. The staff have done a very deep dive edits and it is back to the consultant. They are revising it and should have that back to us in the form of a final draft. Uh, by the end of this month, we're going to review it again. Hopefully it's accurate this time, and with the ideas and hopes that we will have that come to the board as a draft in February, uh, with the February date being the one where they open up the thirty day process for review, uh, public review period, and then a final approval ideally in March. So that's the plan as it is right now. If something changes, I will give you an update on that. Uh, I'm happy to report, once again, our staff and board members uh and other people, past board members even, contributed and donated a hun, $1,300 worth of Target and, Target and Dollar Tree gift cards to the Folsom Cordova Families in Transition Program. This is a tradition for our staff and board uh and community members to donate to this worthy cause. And so this year, $1,300, which is great, very happy with that. We're in the process of interviewing our principal planner, um, and so that's going well so far. The Rosemont Community Park Sports Court Improvement Project, the court surfacing is complete. Lighting has been installed, however, the Tesco electrical panels will take some time to arrive. We're anticipating a mid-February arrival date. But once those get installed, we will be uh doing our notice of completion for that project, so we're looking forward to that. We will have a ribbon cutting because it is such a large project, but when the weather's warmer. So we're anticipating uh most likely a April, March, late March, April uh ribbon cutting for that project in a weekend. Uh, ideally on a weekend. The reason why we did the noon is we have so many park openings and projects that were ribbon cutting. We typically do them after work, um, in the summer when the light is out, but in the winter, there's really not, you know, a window other than kind of lunch, so. Uh, I apologize if that was what it is, but we have so many coming, I didn't want them to uh kind of get not the credit and or the attention they deserve. So uh, yes, we will plan this either on a weekend or in the evening after work where a large majority of people can attend. Uh, with that, um, again, thanks Chase for joining me in the lap for the Polar Bear Plunge. That was really fun. And I'm going to turn it over to Chase this evening, who will be reporting for the Parks and Recreation Department in replacement of Jill Nuns.
Well, thank you. Good evening. Um, and I think everyone should swim a lap next year, I'm just going to say that. Thanks to those of you who braved the frigid waters of the Cordova Community Pool, uh, for the Polar Bear Plunge this past Saturday. It was a, a fun-filled event and um we'll report more out on that uh next month. But I wanted to thank Nicole, her staff, and the Cordova Recreation and Parks Foundation for a great event. Over in recreation and adult sports, uh, we had Sactown Patonk, uh, and they represented Team USA in a major paton competition in Thailand. Um, and they utilize, typically they utilize the Mather Sports Center paton courts for matches and practices. Uh, but the women's triple team uh took a eighteenth place out of forty-three countries. So congratulations to Sactown Patonk, um, local and, and a real ambassador for the sport of patonk, uh, which is very popular in Sacramento. Um, over at Neil Orchard Senior Activities Center, um, a huge thank you to the Senior Advisory Board who helped us purchase thirty-eight new tables and a hundred and fifty new chairs, as well as outright purchasing a new drinking fountain for us with a bottle dispenser. So um, those were much needed and we truly appreciate um their continued efforts to help the No-Sac. So, um, those were much needed and we truly appreciate, um, their continued efforts to help the NO SAC membership. Um, and there's some pictures in your board report. Um, the next item we have coming is a partition for the main room, so we're really excited to get that. Um, over at Cordova Golf Course, it was another great month. Uh, we had 2,624 rounds played, which is compared to last year, uh, was only, um, 1,413. So that was very impressive for the winter months. Uh, so that was a 93% increase in revenue over last year, uh, which is fantastic. So congrats to Daryl, VJ, Stephanie, and all the staff out there for another successful month. Um, they also had two major projects at the course. Uh, we drained and dredged pond number one uh, and replaced the irrigation pump intel intake valve. Um, and then we also fortified the cart barn with new fencing and turned the covered seating area uh, into additional golf cart storage. So hopefully down the line, we can purchase more carts, um, to get more play. Um, and over in parks, we had an amazing person and longtime employee retire, uh, from CRPD after over 20 years of service uh, with the district. Uh, Larry Brown was a park maintenance worker one. Uh, he primarily serviced our north area parks along Folsom Boulevard. Uh, he came to work every day with a strong work ethic and a can-do attitude. Um, many would say he was the best on using a weed eater, uh, and would make the bollard lines, uh, surrounding many of the park, uh, of his parks look very pristine and weed-free. Um, so a final thank you to a great worker that really does deserve to be celebrated on his long career. Um, thank you, Larry, and we hope you enjoy your retirement. And if you turn over to the special event invitation page, um, we'd like to invite you on Monday, January 29th, to the Community Outreach Meeting, number two, for the Community Park at the Ranch Development, and that is in the CRPD main boardroom, and that's from 6:00 to 7:30 PM. Uh, on Wednesday, February 7th, the Lunar New Year Celebration at the Neil Orchard Senior Activities Center at 11:30 AM. And then there's a whole date for the Arbor Day Tree Planting at Dave Roberts Community Park. Uh, and tentatively it's Saturday, February 24th at 8:45 AM until noon, and there will be more info to come. And that's my report.
Thanks, sir. Lots and lots of things being done in the district.
Yes.
Let's move on to item J, informational items.
Thank you. Item J one is the Articles Correspondence and Public Outreach. We had one article. We had two emails. They were thank yous from the Union Sacramento FC for the tournaments, two newsletters, and J two is your calendar.
Thank you. Hey. Anybody have any questions on the calendar coming up?
I have one add-on. Um, January 23rd, next Tuesday, there is a tentative plan for the city to host a workshop for the Little League. Uh, they have several options to extend the Little League, uh, leadership as well as with those, we have, you know, obviously been involved with this. Uh, so there are some of the properties that CRPD owns that is in consideration. Uh, so if you would like to join us, I will give you more information as it becomes available, but I do know if you want to put in your calendar, it's the evening of January 23rd at City Hall in the American River Room. And I will clarify and send out an email update to the board as to what exact time that will be hosted.
Thank you, sir. Hearing nothing else, we will go to item K, adjournment. We will be adjourned to our next regular meeting of the Board of Directors of Cordova Recreation and Park District on Wednesday, February 21st, 2024 at 6:30 PM. Thank you for a great evening, folks.
Thank you all.